All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10th, 2023 Borough Council Meeting. Tonight, we're conducting our Borough Council meeting both in person and virtually. We are glad you've joined us tonight for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute you at the appropriate time and announce your name, and you'll then be able to speak. We will have, we will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight in person and then move over to those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight. In addition to the public hearings, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. We do ask that participation is limited to once per each session. We do ask participants to keep their comments to under three minutes, and the first session of tonight's first public participation will be limited to one hour. Thank you again for being here tonight, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We'll begin with roll call with the Borough Manager, Mr. Krack.
Mr. Berkeley. Ms. Berkeley.
President.
President.
Mr. Carmenito. Mr. Carmenito.
President. President.
Ms. Dugan. Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Webb. Ms. Webb.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Here. Here.
Mr. Ewald. Mr. Ewald.
There, Urschler.
There, Urschler.
Here.
Here.
Manager Assistant Chief Solicitors here. You have a call. Manager Assistant Chief Solicitors here. You have a call.
Very good. Very good.
For.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session. I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session. Oh, recess. I'm so sorry. Oh, recess. I'm so sorry. I'm already trying to, I'm trying to speed through this night to recess to executive session I'm already trying to, I'm trying to speed through this night to recess to executive session to discuss the conditional use for 1,000 Nut Road. to discuss the conditional use for 1,000 Nut Road.
Second. Second. Motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor? Motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back in a few minutes. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back in a few minutes. Next on our agenda is presentations. We don't have any presentations on tonight's docket, so that will open up our first round of public participation. For those who were not joining us during the first few minutes of our meeting, if you are joining us in person, we'll have you come up to the podium, provide your name and address. If you're joining us remotely, we'll have you raise your hand digitally, and a member of our staff will announce your name at the appropriate time and unmute you, at which point you can provide your name and address and make comment to council. We do ask that folks keep their comments to three minutes or less, and with that, we'll open up this first round.
I'd like to flashback to December of '21, and that was a very busy meeting for you guys. That's when you passed the Odessa project. But shortly before that, you had a routine, very brief zoning ordinance change, and it was only discussed a little bit. A former board member, a council member, asked it for clarification with the solicitor at the time, the former one, about tract and parcel. That was explained. And then your president, Mr. Ewald, mentioned it was more of a housekeeping type item. You're cleaning up some language in there. So no further discussion took place, and it was passed eight zero. But of course, what was in that zoning order and change, you guys are all very familiar, I'm sure, now because of what's going on with it, and that's not really my purpose of bringing this up, but, you know, it was about infill zoning, changing the requirements from one acre minimum to insert a different style home on an adjacent block up to eight acres. It was very transparent now for me, looking back and knowing what's going on with the case center property, what that change was, and it's not how it was done there. That action, along with, you know, of course, you know, I'm against the eminent domain in Fillmore Village, and we won't talk about that this evening, but both of those cases, at very best, they're extremely suspect, and I'm being generous. I have harsher feelings how I believe about those two circumstances and what took place for both of those. But at very least, they're both suspect, and I would really like to suggest that council be extremely careful with taking actions that will very likely welcome legal objections. I don't know how those, either of those two in this case, wouldn't welcome legal objections, and I can't imagine that that is your goal here, to try to do good for the community, do things that are positive, do things that move us forward, and, and in lawsuits, and these aren't frivolous. These are serious objections. So that's my, my hope and suggestion that maybe you'll follow that, and I would also like to recommend to newer council members that you take time to thoroughly understand, and I'm not insinuating that you don't know what you're voting for, but take time to really know, because for everyone who voted for this 12 plus two months ago, or a month ago, if they knew what was really in there, that's a sad affair, that if you knew what was in there. If you didn't know, you should have known, because now your solicitor, I'm sure, is a fine gentleman, a good attorney, but now he has to try to somehow defend that, the same with this eminent domain case. And I just think you can do better, and you should do better for our community, and that's not what you're here for, to generate, you know, tax dollars, spend our tax dollars to fight things that shouldn't have been passed in the first place. On a positive note, I'd like to give a shout out to my two future new West Ward council members, who I guess after this evening, at some point, that will be official that, Fillmore Village is moving to the West Ward. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christopher. I'm from 446 Grant Street, up on the north side of Phoenixville, part of the many members of the Phoenixville area, friends of open space. Talked to you guys before and just want to encourage you to continue dreaming about what could be at the K Center, as well as share with you something that I just became aware of, and I'm hoping that you guys will do some due diligence and reach out to Hatboro and talk to the members of Borough Council in Hatboro, as well as the school district. And let me just read what was written here, because this could be the exact same thing here in Phoenixville, and I hope that you can think outside of the nine dots and let things just kind of cool off and don't let the lawyers make all the money. I know you need to get paid, Scott, but in the school district too, but wouldn't it be nice in this small little town of ours if both bodies of Borough Council and the school district could work together in a positive proactive way for the K Center, just like apparently what happened with an elementary school in Hatboro? And let me just read this to you. Victory. Tonight, May 2, 2022, the school board of the school district of Hatboro Horsham voted six to three to approve the sale of the Penny Pack Elementary School to the borough of Hatboro. Thank you to the school board members who voted in support of Hatboro's bid, and those who acted with great integrity. The property will soon belong to Hatboro. Thank you for all your effort, passion, perseverance, had her strong. Kelly A. Harra. The same thing could happen here in Phoenixville, and I hope that you guys can work to make it happen, and please attend the hearing in Westchester on February the 10th. And if you can't, at least find out what happens, and we'll see whether there's another opportunity for everybody to work together for the benefit of the community. Thank you all for your time.
There's no other members of the public joining us here tonight in the room. We'll move over to those joining us on Zoom, where staff will select you in order of your hands raised virtually, and announce your name and unmute you.
Mrs. Hilli, your microphone is unmuted. Mrs. Hilli, your microphone is unmuted.
Hey, good evening. I want to know, I was unable to connect to this meeting when it began, and I wanted to know if the meeting started on time, or was something happening?
Miss Hilli, we started with an executive session shortly after seven o'clock, so I think you, when you saw start, that's when we started the actual meeting.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to know. I was kind of concerned about that. All right. Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay. Any other members of the public in the room? Any other members of the public on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll close the first round of public participation. We will have a second round later in the night, and under our conditional use items, we will have the opportunity for comment during the public hearings. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have a couple items here. Does council wish to pull any items off the consent agenda? What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion for approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you. With that, they'll open up item nine, or item six, with council participation and communications. Any updates from council tonight on any items in the community or otherwise? I believe, Mr. Kirchner, you want to start?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a shout out to the employees at the Borough Sanitation Department. The other day, last Friday, Friday, for those of us who live north of French Creek, that's our trash day. And last Friday, there's, there's a pull off area on 113, just north of Fillmore Street, where people are always dumping stuff there, and my wife drove by there the other day. She said they, the Borough Sanitation crew was out there. They pulled about six mattresses out of there, plus a couch, and they had a front, front end loader to lift that stuff, and I just want to give a shout out to Mark Albert and his crew there at the sanitation department, because they really keep the town clean. You know, years ago, stuff like that would fester for, for weeks in an area like that, and anymore they get right on it. I wish people wouldn't do that. That's not what those areas are for. We have a system where if you have mattresses, large items, you can get them picked up. It's going to cost you a little bit of money, but you don't make the town look worse. Not that our town looks bad, but, you know, do your, do your civic duty and dispose of your trash the right way, but thank you to Mark and, and his crews there for that extra work they have to do, in addition to picking up all of the, all of the usual waste in town, doing that above and beyond.
I don't think any other municipality can say they never missed a trash day during COVID, so that's quite a record that they've maintained. Other communications and updates from council, Ms. Berkeley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to piggyback off what Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just to piggyback off what Mr. Kirchner said, we also do have bulk pickup. Um, and the information is on our website. I've utilized it myself. I've called the office. Our office staff are wonderful and will get you set up. So if you don't know that that's available and you think your only option is to inappropriately dump, it is an option. Um, and then just a couple of upcoming events I wanted to highlight. Tomorrow at our new fire station, um our volunteer officers will be sworn in. And uh some of us will be joining, so just wanted to give a shout out to them and remind everybody of that. We also, um, we are so nonprofit rich in this town. I like to share some of those. So we do have a vendor bingo happening at Friendship Ambulance um on January twentieth to benefit Ann's Heart. They run our Code Blue Center, which we know is especially important during this time of year. And if you are interested in getting involved in Dogwood Planning, we all know that's a huge event within our community. The first meeting to kick off planning will be happening on Wednesday, February first at six P M. at Root Down Brewing. So if you're interested in being involved in a committee, please join that, or if you want to find out more about how you get involved in planning.
To piggyback off Ms. Berkeley's thoughts, uh Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, it is a national day of service and with all of our nonprofits, they're always looking for an extra hand. So if you happen to have the day off of work, uh there is a uh endless amount of need for for extra volunteers in the community with all of our our nonprofits. Um, a few items, uh since we didn't have
Mr. President, um, one other item. I I need to excuse myself for a few minutes. I'll be right back.
Very good.
But so you'll excuse me.
I um, okay, a couple other items since we uh we skipped a couple meetings uh due to the end of the year. Um, with Councilman Weiss's agreement, moving forward, I T T, we will have a standing agenda item for discussions related to the tri-county authority to establish train service. Uh, last month, we met with uh Brian O'Leary and the staff from Chester County Planning Commission to discuss the next steps that the borough needs to be doing and undertaking to keep this project on track. So monthly going forward, it'll be just a standing item that we can address if there's any updates as we go through. But some exciting project work is uh is is starting to actually happen on that. Um, as approved in our consent agenda under the last motion, um I just want to add a just some little additional language um since the items passed uh through Harb, uh the property of one seventy-seven Church Street, the former fire station uh that housed our Phoenix Hose Oak and Ladder Company number one for the last hundred and fifty-plus years uh will be demolished next week. Um, when we were planning on this uh new fire station over at one fifty Paradise Street four years ago now, uh, one of our, one of our main tenants of of reuse for that site was to turn it into public parking. So with the demolition of that site, we're expecting sometime in the spring, uh midsummer possibly, that we will actually be able to provide an additional parking lot at that location. Couple other items here. Um, earlier today, uh also with the fire department, we had our initial Q R S licensure inspection for sixty-five-two rescue truck. Uh, Q R S rescue is not something we've had in the borough before. It is a quick response system that allows us to provide uh certain levels of EMS service prior to an to the ambulance arriving, uh but no transport service. So I do thank Chief Presunus and Dr. Levine for getting this going. Uh, it's exciting that that should be actually operational and on the radio system February first. Uh, and then lastly, uh something that I find most exciting, almost exactly a year after receiving the first shipment of Phoenix Neo equipment. Uh, yesterday, we started having some of our uh engineering firms that are actually the the equipment manufacturers come out to do the hydro and pressure testing of the Phoenix Neo Hydrothermal Carbonization System. Um, if all goes well, we were looking for a full commission and commissioning and ribbon cutting in early March. Uh, so that, that's my updates. And others from council? Seeing uh no other comments, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us in person. And those of you who are joining us virtually, uh certainly a very happy new year to you, and I hope you and your families had a very happy holiday. A couple of things to cover before the holiday. Certainly, we would like to thank um our Phoenixville Police Department as well as the Phoenixville Police Association uh for two very successful events. We had pizza with the police and had a number of students, young students in our community actually come and get to tour the police station and have pizza with our police officers, as well as our very successful shop with a cop, which is a program done through our Phoenixville Police Association, where they take children in our community um on a shopping trip uh to Target. So it's quite an exciting event and wonderful to watch. Um, also to join in with everyone, we are very fortunate to have a number of nonprofits in our community. This year for uh Ann's Heart for their Pay It Forward Cafe Holiday Edition, uh they helped to distribute seven hundred and thirty-one meals uh into the community. Certainly, there is a a great deal of need. We are a very fortunate community. But certainly, there are a number of people in our community who um also are able to take um and participate in these incredible programs and participate with these meals. And so meals certainly go to people who not only uh maybe need a little extra help, but also maybe those who aren't able to cook for themselves uh or may be uh eating alone for the holidays. And so we're very excited that this route able to go out and serve those individuals. Um, I just want to give very special congratulations on the third of January um last Tuesday, uh certainly, we had, we were very fortunate to have our new uh state representatives sworn in. Uh, first was our new state senator. Uh, because of redistricting, we have moved, so our new state senator is Katie Muth. And so congratulations to Katie. She was sworn in last week. Um, and now we're in the forty-fourth P A Senatorial District. And also congratulations to Paul Freel, who is sworn in as our state representative, and we are now the twenty-sixth um a representative district uh here in Pennsylvania. And so uh very fortunate, congratulations to Katie and to Paul. And also congratulations on the seventh, our Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan uh was sworn in once again into our third term as our Congresswoman. Uh, yesterday, we were very fortunate to have a visit by Senator Casey. And so I would like to certainly thank all the nonprofits, the Phoenixville Area Senior Center, uh the uh Mr. Ewald and Mr. Weiss, as well as uh, you know, certainly, I know we were sending regards from the Borough Council. Uh, but we had a number of people who were able to be in attendance and meet with the senator, and he was able to really come and and view some of the work that our nonprofits do, that the borough is doing, as well as uh enjoy a lunch with our seniors and talk about a lot of the programs that he is involved in that are helping to benefit seniors. He is actually the chair of the Aging Committee in the U S Senate. So it was very exciting to have him here, and he could see firsthand the work that we're doing uh within the community. So thank you to the senator, as well as actually our Congresswoman was also here, Chrissy Houlihan, and then representative from um Senator Muth and also a representative of Freel's offices. Um, if you are available, I would highly encourage you on January twenty-third. We are very excited to be hosting the State of the Sixth, and that is an event at the Colonial Theater, which is being put on by our Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan and her office. And um it's an opportunity to come to hear about the last year um that she's had in D C representing all of us, as well as to ask questions. Uh, there will be a time where individuals are able to ask questions of the Congresswoman and uh hear more about what's happening on the federal level. So um thank you all so much. Thanks for being here and thanks for being part of this incredible community.
Thank you, Mr. Rishler. With that, uh we have item eight. We have appointments. Uh, every month, we do ask for uh members of the uh community to consider joining various boards and commissions or committees. Currently, we have an opening on uh one opening on zoning, one opening expected on zoning, an opening on our tree advisory committee, two openings on our Human Relations Committee, and at least one opening on our Harb Committee. Uh, so it's very easy to join any of these boards and committees. Just reach out to your councilperson or borough staff, and we're happy to help you through the process. With that, we'll move on to new business. We have two items to consider. First up tonight is uh a formal motion to uh uh approve the agreement with Tower Direct for our EMS provider service. It was council's pleasure.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the Emergency Medical Services Operation Agreement with Tower Health Direct LLC. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion for this agreement with Tower Health Direct? Tower Direct, sorry. No, it was me. Yeah, Tower Direct. So this is just formalizing what we did last month. Um, with that, no other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero with Mr. Kirchner out of the room at the moment. And second, we have a lease agreement uh for the said EMS provider to be housed at one fifty Paradise. What is council's pleasure for the lease agreement?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Tower Direct LLC.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the lease agreement? Pretty pretty straightforward. Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero with Mr. Kirchner out of the room at the moment. Moving on to section ten of tonight's agenda, we have ordinances and resolutions. Uh, first up, we have a acknowledgement of a resignation from Planning Commission. Um, what is council's pleasure?
This is one dear to my heart. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging William Davidson for his service on Borough Planning Commission as well as our Human Relations Commission.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? On the adoption of the resolution, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. With that, I will read into the um into our minutes, the uh resolution acknowledging uh Bill Davidson for his work. I I worked with him for the last ten years on these various boards and committees, and I do absolutely appreciate the knowledge, skills, and abilities he brought to them. Our resolution states, uh a resolution of gratitude for the public service of William Davidson as a member of and chairman of the Planning Commission and member and chairman of the Human Relations Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas William Davidson served diligently and honorably as a member of the ch- member and chairman of the Planning Commission since April fourteenth, twenty fifteen, and as a member and chairman of the Human Relations Commission since November thirteenth, twenty eighteen. And whereas Mr. Davidson provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Planning Commission, Human Relations Commission, and Borough Council during those times. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to William Davidson for all of his efforts and commitments to the borough in performing his numerous and dedicated responsibilities over the past seven and a half years. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that William Davidson is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his numerous duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. I absolutely, uh, Bill has been a great uh source of wisdom and knowledge on both those committees, and I do appreciate what he's done for our community. Moving on to item B, we have a second item for right.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to appoint and provide for firefighter operations and emergency or emergency medical services to the borough of Phoenixville. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And then we have a an amendment to our chapter fifteen, motor vehicles and traffic. What is council's pleasure for this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending chapter fifteen motor vehicles and traffic.
Second. These were some fairly minor revisions to the uh to section fifteen. Anything that staff or council wants to review, or are we pretty straightforward? Seeing no questions, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And lastly, we have a final consideration for the adoption of the uh ordinance to reapportion the borough's uh district wards for voting purposes. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance to reapportion the borough's uh wards. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Mrs. Webb. We have uh Owen Heine from R V E here tonight, who is our borough uh staff engineer. If there's any questions for the engineer tonight regarding the reapportionment?
Just for point of order, do we want to just review? I mean, we had a special meeting. It was discussed in another council meeting. Um, so this isn't the first discussion that we've had, and it's certainly been a very public discussion. Thank you, Owen, um and all of your staff for all the work um that you've done. I think we've landed in a really great spot, but of course, um, would love to hear a quick overview just for point of order and for the public.
Sure, be happy to do that. Thanks for um, you know, allowing us to help the borough with this process. So this started with twenty twenty census data being released, new official census data. Um, required the borough to go through and update their ward mapping based on the new population data. Um, so we looked at the news official census data for each block in the borough and um were able to adjust the ward boundaries um based on that new uh population data. Um, once we've done that and arrived at new ward boundaries that worked, then we also had to take a look at registered voter voter data and adjust the uh the precincts. Um, so um in the end, the new map allows us to to have a a new election map that that meets all the requirements, the state requirements for um balancing population um and also for making sure that um our polling um locations, elected officials, all that actually very little impact, no impact on those uh locations within the borough. So we're pleased to to assist with this process and um think we're at a good place.
I feel it's a nice concise contiguous map that is uh very logical, especially compared to other locations. So we do appreciate the work. Any other questions from council on this item, Mr. Moore?
I'd just like to remind that we would that uh we we discussed last month that we would post this map to the website. And I'd actually like to urge us to kind of like, like a like a homepage, maybe a banner or something so that it can be prominently displayed.
So what we do with our word map now is we have an overall map, and then we actually have um each individual ward as a PDF as well. So um we'll do that again, but we'll put that as a spotlight on our front page. Um, and we can also do, you know, a social media push that says this is, this is new.
Yeah, they would all thought I'd really appreciate that, and I think if there, I don't know whether there's a way, whether it works with the way you have it set up to show the old map versus the new map, whether that would be advantageous or not, or maybe.
That probably just be confusing. Okay, yeah. And then county services uh will send out county services may send out information as well. Typically, they have in the past, but I don't want to speak for them without them in the room. But mm-hmm, yeah. So yeah, the the next step is that this gets approved tonight, it goes to county, gets approved there. And um typically, they notify all the voters of of where their polling places are. So.
And I I think we are in a day and a night for social media as a big push, and then we've done a really good job of trying to also update people closer to elections so that they're not confused, and that will be a a good time to update them as well. So.
Right. Any other questions for our engineer here? Okay, any other questions on the reapportionment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero with Mr. Kirchner back in the room. Thank you, Owen. With that, that takes us to section eleven, our hearings on conditional use. What is council's pleasure for section A one?
I would entertain a motion to recess the public meeting and reopen the continued hearing on the conditional use application submitted by Arnold Anderson related to the car wash use on one thousand Nut Road.
So moved.
Second.
Have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. So as council knows, this hearing was opened and commenced at council's last meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. The application relates to a car wash use on one thousand Nut Road, being a property located in the C D Corridor Development Zoning District of the borough, which uses permitted upon conditional use approval as an automotive sales and services use in accordance with section twenty-seven dash three zero one point two point A one of the borough zoning ordinance. Exhibits and testimony were presented by the borough and applicant. No other parties came forth, and the public was permitted to provide public comment at the last meeting. At that time, the hearing was continued on the record to this evening. So at this time, the record is closed and no more background or testimony will be provided. However, I believe Mr. Anderson is in the room, and if he would like to make any closing statements, he is welcome to. Uh, he has indicated that uh no closing statements are necessary. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero. Uh, so now that we're back in the public meeting, I understand that council's prepared to render a decision on the one thousand Nut Road Car Wash Conditional Use Application.
Okay, Mr. President, I make a motion that the Borough Ca- the Borough Council, Phoenixville Borough, approves the conditional use application of Arnold Anderson for the drive-through use on one thousand Nut Road, subject to the following conditions. One, the level of service of the intersection surrounding the property shall not be decreased by traffic visiting the drive-through restaurant. Two, the development of the pad site with the drive-through restaurants shall reduce the impervious coverage of the restaurant.
You're reading the wrong one.
Yeah, gotta switch.
I read. Sorry.
Sorry, the car wash, sorry.
Sorry. Should I start over?
Same address, but uh confusing. Yes, please start.
Okay, sorry. I thought I had that right. Okay, Mr. President, I make a motion that Borough Count, the Borough Council, Phoenixville of Borough, sorry, the Borough Council, the Borough of Phoenixville approves the conditional use application of Arnold Anderson. of Borough, sorry, the Borough Council, the Borough of Phoenixville approves the conditional use application of Arnold Anderson for the car wash use of one thousand Nut Road, subject to the following conditions. The car wash shall be designed so that all fluids flow to the center of the building, and all contaminated fluid shall be captured and collected in sealed concrete re- reclamation tanks. Two, the level of service of the intersection surrounding the property shall not be decreased by the traffic visiting car wash. Three, the development of the pad site with the car wash shall reduce the impervious coverage of the property. Four, pedestrian sidewalks shall be installed and improved in the locations discussed during the hearings as identified on exhibit A. The sidewalk along the main access drive running northwest to southeast from Nut Road to the northern property boundary shall have a width of no less than eight feet. Applicants shall submit for a building permit for the sidewalk extension on the portion of the property within Schuylkill Township within ninety days of the recording of the land development planned for the drive-through restaurant pad site. To the extent that Schuylkill Township does not ultimately approve the sidewalk extension within Schuylkill Township, an applicant shall be released from the condition of this conditional use decision order to install the portion of the sidewalk within Schuylkill Township. Five, a trail connection to the French Creek Trail along the signage related thereto satisfactory to the borough shall be installed and approved in the locations discussed during the hearing. As identified on exhibit A, the trail shall have a width no less than eight feet from the end of the property's internal sidewalks to the French Creek Trail. Six, a bus stop with a covered shelter shall be installed on the northeast corner of the internal four-way intersection abutting the car wash pad site or another location on the portion of the site located in the borough determined by Borough Traffic Engineer and SEPTA as preferable, and in accordance with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, SEPTA bus stop guidelines as amended. Seven, nothing in this decision and order by Borough Council on this application shall be construed as either an express or implied waiver of any provisions of any applicable ordinance of the Borough of Phoenixville. No level of development is guaranteed by virtue of this conditional use approval, and the proposed improvements shall be permitted only if the fully engineered plans for the property can demonstrate compliance with all applicable zoning, land development, and subdivision regulations of the borough, as well as any relevant statutes or regulations of any other government entity having jurisdiction over development on the property. Eight, all development permitted by this conditional use approval shall be consistent with the testimony and exhibits submitted to the Borough Council at the hearings held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero. Uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson. A written copy of the decision will be rendered to you in the time period provided by the municipality's planning code. So with that, I would entertain a motion to recess the public meeting and reopen the continued hearing on the conditional use application submitted by Arnold Anderson related to a restaurant with a drive-through use on one thousand Nut Road.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero. Um, so as council knows, this hearing was also opened and commenced at council's last meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and this application relates to a restaurant drive-through use on one thousand Nut Road. And this property, the property previously discussed, located in the CD Corridor Development Zoning District, and this use is permitted in accordance with section twenty-seven dash three oh one dot two dot A one of the borough zoning ordinance as a conditional use. Exhibits and testimony were presented by the borough and applicant. Laura Vernola and Elizabeth Stevens were granted party status at that time, and the public was permitted to provide public comment. At that time, the hearing was continued on the record. So at this time, the record is closed, and no more background or testimony will be provided. If Ms. Vernola is present, I would briefly turn the hearing over to her to make a final statement. Is Ms. Vernola present? Uh, let the record reflect, there's no response uh, in person. And it appears from Ms. Logan uh, that Ms. Vernola is not present on Zoom either. Uh, so with that, uh, if Ms. Stevens is present, I would briefly offer her the opportunity to provide a closing statement. Is Ms. Stevens uh, present? Let the record reflect that uh, the in-person public uh, provided no response. And Ms. Logan has indicated that Ms. Stevens is not present in zone, in Zoom. Uh, so I would also uh, offer Mr. Anderson the opportunity to pro- provide closing statements if he would like to. Uh, and he is in the audience and has reflected that he does not have any closing statements. Uh, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero. But I understand that council is also prepared to render a decision on the uh, restaurant.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the Borough Council of Phoenixville approves the conditional use application of Arnold Anderson for the drive-through use of one thousand Nut Road, subject to the following conditions. The level of service of the intersection surrounding the property should not be decreased by traffic visiting the drive-through restaurant. The development of the pad site with the drive-through restaurant shall reduce the impervious, previous coverage of the property. Three, pedestrian sidewalks shall be installed and improved in the locations discussed during the hearing, which are to be identified it on exhibit A, the sidewalk along the main access drive running northwest to southeast from Nut Road to the northern property boundary shall have no less than so have a width of no less than eight feet. Applicants shall submit for a building permit for the sidewalk extension within Schuylkill Township within ninety days of the recording of the land development plans for the drive-through restaurant pad site. The extent that Schuylkill Township does not ultimately approve the sidewalk extension within Schuylkill Township, then the applicant shall be released from the condition of this conditional use decision in order to install the portion of the sidewalk within Schuylkill Township. Four, a trail connection to the French Creek Trail, along with signage related thereto satisfactory to the borough, shall be installed and improved in the locations discussed during the hearing, identified on and exhibit A. The trail shall have a width of no less than eight feet from the end of the property's internal sidewalks to the French Creek Trail. Five, a bus stop with covered shelter shall be installed on the southeast corner of the internal four-way intersection abutting the drive-through restaurant pad site or another location on the portion of the site located in the borough determined by Borough Traffic Engineer and SEPTA as a preferable. Six, nothing in this decision and order of the Borough Council on this application shall be construed as either an express or implied waiver of any provision of any applicable ordinance of the Borough of Phoenixville. No level of development is guaranteed by virtue of this conditional approval, and the pro- proposed improvement shall be permitted only if the fully engineered plans for the property can demonstrate compliance with all applicable zoning, land development, subdivision regulations of the borough, as well as any relevant statutes or regulations of any other government entity having jurisdiction over the development on the property. Seven, all developments prohibited permitted by this conditional use approval shall be consistent with the testimony and exhibits submitted to Borough Council at the hearings held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions from council? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, thank you, Mr. Anderson. A written copy of this decision will also be rendered to you in the time period provided by the MPC. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to recess the public meeting and reopen the continued hearing on the conditional use application submitted by Clinton Wyler related to the entertainment hall use on one nineteen South Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero. As council knows, this hearing was opened and commenced at council's last meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. The application relates to an entertainment hall use in one nineteen South Main Street, being a property located in the TC Town Center Zoning District of the borough, which uses permitted upon conditional use approval as an entertainment hall use in accordance with section twenty-seven dash three oh one dot two dot A one of the borough zoning ordinance. Exhibits were entered into the record by the borough, and some testimony was presented by the applicant. Michael K. Jack was permitted to intervene as a party, and at that time, the hearing was continued on the record to this evening. At this time, we will continue to hear testimony and review evidence from Mr. Wyler, and I will turn the hearing over to him.
Hello.
Good evening.
We have um, a flash drive with some stuff on it. Do I give that to you?
Mr. Wyler, uh, you provided some documents to the borough, I believe, this week or the end of last week. Uh, are are those documents the same that are on your flash drive?
Um, it's slightly different, but I was on the impression we had to bring it here.
Okay.
We can use that.
We we have the PowerPoint.
Yeah, it's that, it's just, we changed it a little bit, but.
Okay, I'm. I I normally don't like to bring in flash drives into our system.
I understand, yeah. If um, there is also a link I sent to David. I don't know if we could use that. Okay. But if you want to just use the one that I, I mean.
Oh, well, okay, the link.
Okay. How should I get it to you?
Why don't we start with what you provided last week, and you can tell us what the changes are?
Okay. I'm just trying to recall where we stopped, um.
Well, let's tell you what, let's start from the beginning. I'm gonna lay out a little bit of procedure.
Okay, thanks.
So as a quick reminder, uh, you as the applicant have the opportunity to present witnesses and provide evidence. Um, I assume that you will largely be your own witness, and uh, you need to be re sworn um, so that you're under oath, uh, and then the documents that you provided will be your evidence.
Okay.
Um, you need to explain what your uses and why you think it's a good fit for the property, at which point uh, Mr. K. Jack, if he's present, um, will be able to cross-examine your witnesses. Borough Council will be able to ask questions of your witnesses. Again, that's you. Um, and then you would be able to provide the testimony of any other witnesses. Um, and I know, I believe your business partner is here, and I don't know if you have, you desire to have him speak or not. Um, and then there are general conditional use standards um, that are at section twenty-seven dash nine oh five uh, that you should demonstrate compliance with in order to justify why you would be permitted to operate your desired conditional use.
Got it. Okay.
Um, so why don't we start with getting used for?
Okay. Okay. So this is um, this is for the tract of land at one nineteen South Main. Um, the tract is own TC, and it's owned by South Main Properties. Um, the approximate square footage is forty-two hundred feet, and uh, we propose to use this as an entertainment hall for arcade games, um, pinball machines, pool, and so on. The this is exactly what, you know, an entertainment hall is defined as. Um, it's a building or structure which provides automatic amusement devices or games of this nature. So we feel that and and its uses in this TC district. So we feel that this is consistent with our application. Jumping ahead to present use of the property um, is is the sound bank on the main floor, and then on the second floor is a martial arts club. Uh, where we propose to operate is um, previously where the Moose Lodge was. Um, which is what the building was constructed for in the early nineteen hundreds. So.
Mr. Wyler, are you referring to your PowerPoint presentation? Uh, Ms. Logan, are we able to bring that PowerPoint presentation um, up onto the screen?
Okay. Oh. Mm-hmm. Are on. Just did that part. So the next slide. Yes. Okay. Thank you. So as it states, you know, um, our objective is to create a medieval-themed arcade and gaming experience, and um, this will have about thirty arcade games plus pinball machines, pool, darts, um, console gaming, as well as board games. And the goal is to create a fun getaway room for um, members of the community and visitors to relax and have fun, their friends and family. So we go back to uh, five. Okay. No problem. Our um, tentative hours of operation are Wednesday through Thursday, uh, five to twelve, and Fridays through Sunday, noon to twelve. Um, and as it says there, we'll, we'll have, provide fountain soda and snacks and so on. Uh, we've also applied for a brewery license uh, with the PLCB, so we have uh, attorney Matthew Anderson on retainer working on that currently. Um, and he's been working on that for a few weeks, so that's well underway. Um, go to the next slide. So for the con- uh, conditional use considerations, uh, suitability uh, and policy compliant, uh, property is suitable for the use desired and is consistent with the conditional use goals and objectives and policies. Uh, previous and current businesses in the location have been used for entertainment hall purposes, sound bank, Moose Lodge. Um, but our proposed emphasis again is on gaming. Um, this part is a little bit different, so I'm just gonna, you'll just have to bear with me, because this is the old one. Um, in terms of public safety, there's a wealth of evidence that the use intended is not a threat to public health or morals or anything of that nature, and there are currently over eight thousand arcades um, in operation in the United States today. And they generally offer a safe entertainment venue for communities and people of all ages. And that's according to Ibis World Business Research Firm. Um, in terms of um, roads and street traffic, uh, while the proposed location was certified for max occupancy of one oh five. While the proposed location was certified for max occupancy of one oh five uh, by the fire marshal. We anticipate um, around seventy five, eighty people at peak times, max. Um, and of these patrons, we anticipate over half of them will be visiting uh, town for other entertainment purposes, so. There are six public parking lots within point three miles of the proposed location, so parking and traffic demands. Should be minimal. Um, in regard to patron circulation and emergency access. Uh, as displayed on our floor plan, which if you could go to. It's one of the last slides. Yeah, that's good, thank you. As displayed on our floor plan, there's adequate space and lanes for patron circulation. Uh, games will be spaced approximately five feet apart to afford a a path to a block doorways. And there are two exits on the proposed venue on Hall Street, there's a. A street level entrance exit where emergency personnel can easily enter and exit. And we've also installed an ADA compliant ramp at this entrance. Um, to assist handicap patrons and or emergency personnel. And this will also serve as the entrance for staff. In terms of staff. There should be no, uh, the arcade will be staffed with no less than three employees at any time. And more at peak hours, including at least one owner, one of the two owners on site during open hours. Uh, a video security system will also be installed. Restrooms and sanitary uh, concerns. The location features two renovated restrooms, uh, one with two urinals and one stall and a second with two stalls. Water usage. Um, we won't require a large amount of water. And our landlord has this split between the tenants of the building. And lastly, um, environmental impact. Since only the. Our only improvements, uh, interior improvements are cosmetic. There will be no increase of to water runoff or erosion as a role, uh, as a result of. Any type of renovation. And that pretty much goes through the list of conditional use concerns in that section. There's no relief from zoning ordinances that we know about. If you could go back to slide number ten, please. Uh, yeah, that one. Uh, one more, back to the map. Uh, yes, thank you. I'm sure everyone has this memorized, but. We won't be adding additional parking. Uh, there's no room to add spaces and the current business at the building, they don't have customer parking. There is about six spots behind the building, but. It's for employees of the three different businesses. Um, and again, there are six public parking lots within point three miles of the location. Terms of just general information. It's a simple business model. As I said, it's it's essentially an arcade with billiards and darts. Um, and other. Fun stuff. And um, we want to stress it'll be an arcade first and a brewery second, once you know, our application is approved. Um, we'd also, we'd like to be able to host events, parties. Um, the way it works is you pay at the door. And uh, all games are on free play, so we're not. Exchanging a whole lot of cash there. Um, and the admittance fee will be good all day for the patron. Again, we'll, Terry, my business partner and myself, one of us will be on premise during operational hours. Uh, and once we get approval from the uh, PLCB, we'll have a qualified bartender. So. And again, the the maximum occupancy is set at a hundred and five, but. We don't, we we would be excited if we had seventy five people at any one time, we don't. Expect a whole lot more than that. But we will restrict it and we will be able to count, do a headcount as they come in, cause that's how we're. Taking note of, you know, how many people paid for the day.
Mr. Wyler, could you walk us through your floor plan a little bit more?
Absolutely. We go back to slide sixteen, there it is, thank you. So this is the main floor. And it's about, I don't think it says it on here, but on the long side, that's about forty feet. And on the short side, it's about thirty feet. On the far right, you'll see where the bar is, which we shortened. The the old bar in the moose used to be out to about where the first row of games are. Um, but you can see everything is spaced accordingly. Those, those uh, things in the center are tables and chairs and that'll be five feet. For each of those lanes in width. Um, and then the smaller squares are all the arcade games. And at the bottom right corner is where the, essentially where the emergency exit is. Uh, where the ramp is and where that handicap um, entrance and exit is.
Can you describe what that shape is at the top left?
The top left is the pool table. Um, with chairs, the circles around it are chairs. Um, and below that, on the other side, the the bottom wall is uh, where the dartboard or boards will be. Uh, directly to the right of that is pinball machines. In that, there's four of them there now. And then all the, as I mentioned, all the, all the little squares are, and this is subject to change, by the way. But this is how we envision it. You know, and then at the top, we have a small cove uh, inside of the L shape. Where the, that the games, that the arcade games form, where there would be a mini lounge with a uh, a TV and uh, console game. Up there, and to the right of that are the the driving games. And then the bar on the right side.
How this does the mock layout of the main room, are there other rooms?
There are two other small rooms, you could go to the uh, next slide, please. This is the back room, it's thirteen by eighteen. We're not exactly sure how we'll utilize this yet, this is one idea. It might just be an event space, but on this floor plan, it's a small arcade. Section with a few uh, lounge chairs and tables. Uh, the next slide, please. And then there's even a smaller room across from the bathroom. That we were considering making a pinball room, but it may be too small for that, so. This, right now is just a little lounge area with a TV in it.
How many arcade games do you expect to have?
Uh, around thirty.
A- and you mentioned that the sound banks on the first floor and the martial arts. Uh, is on the second floor and that you're taking the Moose Lodge space.
Yeah.
What floor is the Moose Lodge space?
It's in the basement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, a- and you you listed your hours at being something like five to twelve, I believe. With the thought that alcohol might be served, is there a thought about an age limit uh, beginning at certain hours or at all times or?
That was part of the the new slides. We're thinking that we'll have what we, we're gonna call family hours from noon till seven or eight. On, you know, uh, the weekends, you know, weeknights, it'll be from five till seven or eight, something like that. But at some point, it'll be twenty one and up.
Okay.
Let's see.
Mr. Wyler, u- unless you have something else you wanna share with us, um. Might turn it over to questions from Mr. K Jack if he's here and questions from council, is that okay?
That's fine, yeah.
Is Mr. K Jack present or participating virtually? Uh, let the record reflect, there is no response in Borough Council uh, meeting hall. And he does not appear to be present virtually, uh, so with that, I would. Uh, turn it over to council if they have any questions for Mr. Wyler.
Sure, Mr. Wyler, I I have a couple of questions, um. Uh, I think pretty easy ones, um, in terms of the arcade games, uh, these are just strictly uh, play for fun, there's no small games a chance, there's no. These aren't the um.
No gambling of any kind.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
And then, and I'm not sure if this falls under conditional use or not, so guide me if I'm wrong, but um, is it allowed to ask if it would be bring your own? Uh, BYO alcohol prior to the alcohol license, or is that not other? Okay, would you, I I understand that the alcohol license may take some time, would you be considering uh, BYO up until that point or?
Yeah, we thought about that.
Okay.
It all depends on the timing of everything. Um, you know, we're, we're hoping that the brewery license is approved. It's by the end of March, but we don't know, and we still have quite a ways to go on renovations, so. Um, you know, if we're open for a few weeks before we get the license, then we would consider that and. Go about getting the uh, appropriate uh, permits and so on for that.
That, those are my only questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Brian Moore, Scott, I actually wanted to ask Scott, will this also go through uh, development? Any commission or not?
I I believe it's unlikely, um, I I don't wanna. Commit us uh, to a position at this point in time, uh, but I would not expect that it would.
Mr. Gardner. Yes, I I have a few questions, first off, thank you, you've uh, you've given us a lot more information.
Yeah.
This month than than we had to work with last month, so I appreciate that. I wanted to to follow up on the number of employees because the application said total four, two per shift. And you're taught, you said it would be a no less than three employees.
Yeah.
At any one time?
We amended our application.
Okay.
That's been.
Okay.
Or not, or circulated, but we did make that change on the application.
Okay, and you you said you anticipate a peak of seventy five?
Yeah, I mean.
Eighty.
Just an estimate.
Right.
And that would be at, you know, the highest.
Right. And the the fire marshal's maximum occupancy is one hundred five.
Correct.
Right.
One fifteen, uh, yeah. It's either one oh five or one fifteen, um, but that's correct. I should have that memorized.
Okay, because I I I feel, I mean, the original application said two per shift, one hundred fifteen patrons at maximum. Um, oper- peak operation and.
Okay. It is one oh five.
One oh five, okay.
Yeah, and and we changed it to to no less than three.
Yeah, I I feel better with.
Okay.
No less than three.
Good.
Um, and I'm sure, you know, if if you see three is not enough, you would.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You would bring in more, the license, the uh, LCB license that you're pursuing. It is for beer only, is that correct?
Brewery license, which allows you to serve beer, wine and spirits.
Oh, okay, so.
As long as it's made in Pennsylvania.
Okay.
That's how that works.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're just interested in the beer part for starters. And see how that goes and maybe it'll graduate to other things, but um, you know, that's, that's what we're planning.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, I I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions for council?
Just wanna clarify, so um, what's, what, how many bathrooms are there, I mean?
There are two bathrooms.
Okay, and they're fully functioning at this point or?
Yeah, they need some cosmetic renovations, but they're fully functional. Um, and like I said, the, there's three urinals at once, at one stall in. One of them and three stalls in the other one.
And um, just to explain the, you said there's a two step, there's the one entrance is two steps down. And it's essentially flush with the sidewalk. Or just, can you just describe the entrances again?
Yeah.
I think you have a picture.
Yeah.
If you could go to that.
We should go back and explain that. Uh, go back to the building photos. Yeah, so on the left star is the main entrance to the front of the building. That will be our main entrance. That, if you go straight through those doors, that puts you in the uh, in the sound bank. To get to our spot and to get to the studio upstairs, you have to turn left and then either go up or down. And then it's a staircase, so what we did is um, on the star on the right. There's also, that's more of a, that goes right into our function of the building, but it was a staircase there. So that's where we installed the ramp. In case somebody came to the front and, you know, couldn't get access, but that will serve, you know. To help handicap, that would help emergency entrances, that'll help us get machines in and out of the building. Um, so that's a much easier way to do that. Is that what you, is that the one you know?
Yeah, I was trying to understand, I I thought, I thought the main entrance to your space was like a couple of steps down from the sidewalk. But no, you're saying it's a ramp and then the main entrance is.
That entrance is for all three businesses in that building.
Mr. Wyler, I'm going to suggest that we mark this PowerPoint as applicant's exhibit one.
Okay.
And does council have any further questions?
Should that be the updated PowerPoint?
Well.
Or the one we haven't presented?
We haven't, we need to mark the one that's presented.
Got it.
We haven't seen the updated one.
Just wanna be short.
So that's likely not going to be an exhibit to this hearing, um, but Mr. Wyler has provided us with the changes and the updates via his testimony. So any other questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Wyler, do you have anything, any more evidence or testimony that you would like to provide or? Anyone else that you would like to present as a witness?
Um, I would like to call my business partner, Terry Hughes, if he has anything to add. Yeah, let's get.
Okay.
We'll have Terry, if that's all right.
A- absolutely, it's your, it's your case, so if you would like him to.
Yeah.
Make a statement, um, I'll have to come up to the microphone and be sworn uh, by our court reporter.
Okay. So all I'm gonna say is kind of reiterate what Clint said, but say, Clint and I've uh, been kind of partners for. Maybe six years, business partners, we met through the arcade world. Uh, we have a common love of arcade games and we've both been collecting games for probably a decade now. And our collection of games is almost ninety, somebody asked how many we put in. And our collection of games is almost ninety. Somebody asked how many we put in. We would love to fit them all, there's just no room. Uh, and we're both really excited about the place. We've put a lot of uh, sweat equity into it so far. Trying to give it a cool feel, a nice vibe, hopefully a little bit of a lounge feel where people can come and stay and hang out. You know, they're not rushed out. They could just socialize. I'm happy to answer any questions. Other than that, I could just say that I am local to the area. I've lived in Blue Bell for seventeen years.
I I guess I did have one final question about. And your plans once, assuming you get the um, uh, the alcohol license. And then you're going to have family time and then you're going to have, I guess, only twenty one and older after a certain hours, correct? Okay, so then will you be like, and so this operation is you pay for admittance. When you get in the door and then and then you play, so you're you're. Your uh, age control in terms of twenty one and over would be at that point, you know, so.
Correct, it would be at the door.
It would be at the door, so if if you were under twenty one or you couldn't provide proper identification, you you wouldn't be able to come in.
Right.
Okay, will you kick people out? Interesting question. Well, say they're there at seven.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't, obviously wouldn't serve.
Right.
Um, but that's a good question, how you would do that when you're closed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mister Hughes?
Um, I I have one. I'm I'm just curious. You said, uh, between you, you own ninety? Of these arcade games?
Probably somewhere around there.
Okay. Um, are, so you will, you will be rotating them?
Yeah, we're definitely gonna, we're definitely gonna rotate them around. I mean, we've, we've uh, we've got together about fixing some games that we had in common and. We have some at other microbreweries in the area. I think we have a dozen in Lansdale.
Okay.
And um, that we just leased to the owner.
Okay.
But we're gonna rotate them in and out, yeah. That's gonna be the difficult decision, which ones are in and out, but people can request and.
Yeah, well, that that that's not part of our conditional application. I'm just, I'm just curious that uh.
Yeah.
You had, you had ninety games, I'm impressed.
There's an office, there's a back storage room where we can store additional games. These things are thirty or four years old and need to be repaired.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, thank you, Mister Hughes. Mister Wyler, do you have any other witnesses or testimony that you'd like to present? Okay, thank you. Um, I I think we established earlier that Mister K Jack was not here. Uh, does that remain the case? Uh, let the record reflect, uh, no one has spoken up in the audience, whether virtual or in person. Um, with that, I would open uh, it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a statement on the entertainment? Hall use application that is before us this evening. Uh, Mister De Luca, please approach the microphone. And please state your name and address for the record since this is.
Tom De Luca, uh, two twenty-five Ashburn Road. Uh, they're just questions that I didn't hear answered, uh, that I think are, you know, important. Uh, the head count, I'm not familiar with how the fire marshal or the police chief, it does a uh, a maximum count for billing. Does that take into account all this equipment in there? Because, you know, it's not that big of a space, so I don't know how they consider that when you're gonna fill, you know, more than half the floor space with equipment. Uh, the all ages, uh, I I'm just curious how you'll handle. Again, it wasn't very clarified how you guys can make a decision when it's unknown, how it's gonna be handled when. And if alcohol will be available. So how do you decide that when you just, this is an unknown at this point? Uh. And then just, I I think the exit's really needed to be more clarified. It sounds like the ramp is for uh, handicap, if someone shows up that way in and out for employees, in and out for equipment. What truly was that entrance for uh, your customers? Maybe you could clarify how many steps, what what are they doing? Are they turning down a couple of different steps? It hasn't been used that way in a while. I it's just, myself, I just wish, I I I'm a detail-oriented guy. And the more I know and and the picture I can paint, whether there were physical pictures for you to look at. You know, you're you're proving something kind of sight unseen, so I just think all these issues are, you know, worthy before you take a bet, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else in the public here in person like to make a comment on this application? Uh, seeing none, I believe we have someone who'd like to participate and make a public comment uh, virtually.
Mister Bischler, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi, yes, thank you for um, allowing me to participate. I just wanted to say that I first saw uh, the the idea for this through um.
Sir, sir, excuse me, could you please state your name and address for the record before you begin?
Oh, absolutely, sorry about that. My name is John Bischler. I reside at eight nine one nine Marion, M A R I O N. Road in Riverside, California, nine two five zero three. I'm also originally from the area. And I happened to see a video on social media of the, the uh, Fun Dungeon. And I was really excited that we're getting back to community events. I think our, our community in um. Has be, I have children myself and they are stuck in their own homes playing virtual video games with their friends. And I think this is gonna be great for families, as well as for all of us to get out into the community and do things, so um. From what I saw from Mister Wyler, I believe, it looks like a really great uh, place. Um. I don't myself, I I'm not a detail-oriented guy as much as like, you know, having people out and having fun. Like the last gentleman spoke about being detail-oriented, and I think, you know, um, they pretty much outlined the plan on. I've been to places myself where kids gotta go at eight o'clock and that's, they should probably be in bed at that point anyway. But um, I'm really excited to come out and try it as a visitor back into your community. I do come back several times a year. I'm looking forward to it. I hope you guys approve it.
Thank you, Mister Bischler. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to make comment virtually? Uh, seeing none, uh, any comment from council? All right, seeing none, uh, Mister Wyler, I would turn it over to you for closing statements. Actually, Mister Wyler, uh, before you uh, start your closing statement. Um, a- am I correct that you would like to enter your exhibit A one into the record?
If we can't, if if it's gotta be the one you have and not the updated one, then yes, we'll we'll use the one you have.
Okay, so granted. Um, and with that, I would now offer you an opportunity to provide a final statement.
Yes, uh, in closing, I'd just like to say that, you know, one of, one of the things that Terry and I look forward to doing is. Hosting events and and giving back to the town and and community and. And just being a part of the community. Um, I don't think I said this, but I've lived here, I've lived on Washington Ave since two thousand and seven. And um, I'm not planning on moving anytime soon, so. It's, it's a a dream come true to have my own arcade within walking distance of my house. And be able to arrange events and just be a part of it, be a part of what's going on here because it is special. And everybody that comes to visit is instantly taken by the town. So, you know, it's, it's really a special place and we look forward to serving the community.
Thank you, Mister Wyler. Um, now, it is the typical procedure of council. Uh, to continue the hearing for one last closing argument and decision to the next meeting, is that the case tonight? Appears to be so. Uh, so with that, uh, this hearing will be continued to council's next meeting to be held on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. At seven PM here in Borough Hall for closing statements and decision. So with that, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed, carries eight zero.
Except. Okay, with that, we'll resume our normal agenda here with item twelve. We have reports of committees, boards and commissions. Mister Moore with planning commission.
Uh, nothing to report. Um, we did not have a meeting uh, in December and also this week's uh, the Thursday. The meeting scheduled for this Thursday was also canceled because there's no business in front of the commission. So our next uh, planning commission meeting will be on Thursday, February ninth at six.
Great, thank you. Ms. Dugan with Harb?
I have a few things. Um, there is going to be another blood drive uh, scheduled for February thirteenth. Um, there were thirty five people who came in December, so that's a nice start.
Are you doing, are you doing harbor rec?
Oh, Harp, sorry.
Jumping ahead.
Yeah, I really am. Okay, no, there was nothing more on Harp that we didn't already approve. He'll be back to me in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, so February sixth is the next Harb meeting. Uh, Mister Kirkner with regional planning?
Nothing to report. We had our last meeting, I believe, November thirtieth it was, didn't have a meeting in December. We'll pick that up on um, the last Wednesday.
So January twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan with rec board?
Just to finish what I was saying, um, there is a uh, a couple programs that were starting. And there's going to be a strength core and flexibility with new uh, sessions started or starting January twelfth. Uh, strength circuit class Mondays in January through February. Uh, pickleball, universal records with Tyler Clinics until the middle of February, Smashville Pickleball. For novice and intermediate classes through the end of February and pickleball ratings clinic through the middle of February. Uh, so much fun, session one and two for eleven-year-olds and over runs through April. Shiny Nights Chess Club. Uh, that's Monday, starting in March through April. This is a new idea that should be fun. Uh, Family Night Out, the next one of those will be January nineteenth, uh, fun with family phys ed. Soccer shots, soccer shots Saturdays, uh, January fourteenth to February twenty-fifth. And Sundays, January fifteenth to February twenty-sixth. All the information is definitely on the uh, the website for that. And then a new one, there's a Flag Football Training Academy and Clinic. Uh, Saturday, starting two eighteen for ages six to twelve. And there's, of course, new yoga classes Thursday, six and Sundays, ten AM. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. And the next meeting's January twenty-third?
I'll take your word for it.
Yep. Ms. Webb with beautification?
Uh, the meeting was canceled this month, nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Berkeley with tree advisory?
We had our meeting last night. Um, Gina and I slept here. Um, we um, had, did start talking about Arbor Day planning, spring planning, so be on the lookout for that. They're finalizing data, I imagine. Our next meeting, uh, we'll have more details on that. And then we did opt to change our meeting time. Um, so just so the public is aware, we are moving it to the first Monday of the month. And that'll be at seven PM to align um, with some other meetings and other evenings um, for staff and and everyone. So just if you are interested in attending, it will be the next meeting and moving forward, it'll be the first Monday of the month. So February sixth is the next Monday, um, that we will be meeting and it'll be at seven PM. We do still have an opening if you're interested in being part of our tree advisory commission.
Great. We'll move on to personnel and public safety. Ms. Berkeley?
That's me again. Uh, we did have uh, the pleasure of interviewing Mister Kevin Dwyer for planning commission. He is here um, and waiting to um, have this vote, but also patiently listening to everything going on. We had a great discussion with him. He has um, been in the borough for a little bit, brings lots to the table. Certainly, if council has any questions, but I will definitely make a strong motion to appoint Mister Kevin Dwyer to planning commission. For a term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, and we did recommend that in committee three zero.
A second.
Much my Ms. Berkeley, second my Ms. Webb for the uh, appointment of Kevin Dwyer to planning commission. Any questions on the motion or questions for the applicant? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Kevin, for joining. We appreciate you stepping up. Ms. Berkeley, anything else from? Please, uh, personnel, public safety?
Uh, no, I would just again highlight that if people are wanting to get involved, we do have quite a few vacancies. I know you reviewed them before. Um, but we do have two on our human relations commission. There's a vacancy on tree advisory, as I just reviewed. Um, and then Harb, is there still one, correct? And one on zoning hearing and one anticipated, two, yeah, one, one current and one anticipated or two? Okay, so again, this is a great time to come out, get involved in your community. We have a lot of passion out there. We do interview um, and have applications come through my committee, so it's not as scary as this big public meeting. Uh, and we have lots of good discussion, um, and interview the candidates in a, in a nice setting like that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we'll move on to parks and recreation with uh, Mister Moore?
Uh, nothing to report. We had the December meeting was uh, canceled, so the next park and recreation meeting is. Tuesday, uh, one seventeen, January seventeenth at six.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Kirk with policy?
Nothing to report, Mister President. The next meeting is Tuesday, uh, January twenty-fourth.
Thank you. Mister Weiss with uh, infrastructure, technology, technology, transportation and sustainability?
Yes, thank you, Mister President. Uh, nothing to report here as well. Uh, lots going on. Our next meeting is one week from tonight at seven PM on uh, January seventeenth.
Thank you. And Ms. Dugan with finance?
Again, that one was canceled as well.
Great. With that, we'll move on to our second and final round of public participation. Any members of the public that are joining us uh, remotely can raise their hand digitally. Uh, at the appropriate time, staff will uh, announce your name and unmute your microphone, allowing you to state your name and address and make comment to council. We will start with those members of the public who are joining us here in the room with us tonight. If any members of the public would like to make any additional public uh, comments to council, uh, please step up to the podium uh, and state your name and address. We'll be happy to hear your public participation. With no one rushing to the podium in the room, uh, if we wanna head to the Zoom, uh, and see if anybody is currently. Waiting to make comment in the Zoom world?
Mister Lefty, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi there. My name is Steven Lefty and I live at nine Diana Drive in Beingsville. I have a question regarding some coding and ordinances. This is my first meeting that I've ever watched or attended. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to. Uh, ask about an interpretation of a code, so you can correct me if this is, if I should do this some other way.
I, if if you wanna reach out to one of us directly, um, we can actually put you in touch with the right person to to have any questions answered. Um, over the phone is probably the better way to to handle anything specific.
Um, and he has emailed me and I am following up on.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely, I'll be in touch. Thank.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, in that case, uh, I did email uh, Mister Weiss there and just wanted to ask here just in case. But since I'll be, Mister Weiss will be following up with me, then I'm okay here.
Great, thank you. Oh, okay. Any other members of the public joining us uh, virtually? Okay, we're not seeing any other hands raised in the Zoom world. Another members joining us uh, in the room for public participation. With that, we'll close the second and final round of public participation. Uh, any communication or council participation? As a closing note, okay? And then staff reports are in your packets for manager, police, fire, planning codes, public works, finance and human resources. Any questions for any of the items in our staff reports? Seeing none, uh, we do have a need for executive session to discuss personnel, real estate and litigation. There is no voting actions. It will be uh, anticipated in this session, so we're looking for a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
With a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mister Carmen Nieto. Uh, again, we will not be returning from this uh, item for any action on the floor. So we'll see you next month in February for our next Borough Council meeting. Thank you all for joining us tonight and have a great night.